I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Monday, June seventeenth, twenty twenty four, and the time is four oh two P M. Jeff, could you take a role call, please?
Commissioner Carlos Perez is excused. Commissioner Bob Howard.
Here.
Commissioner John Graver.
Here.
Commissioner Richard Lumsdale.
Here.
Commissioner Ann Warman, here. Commissioner David Johnstone is excused and Commissioner Austin Walker is excused.
Oh, can we, uh, please stand and do the pledge of allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance to the law of the United States of America. And to the republic from which stands one nation, America, indivisible, with every deed and justice for all.
Let's, everyone had an opportunity to, to read our minutes from our past meeting.
I, we want to go ahead and go.
Go ahead.
Okay. Yes, I make a motion that we approve the minutes as written.
Okay, we have.
A second?
We have a motion that the meeting, uh, the minutes from our last minute be accepted and approved. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carried. We go on to. Staff Communications, item five. Staff, do you have any new communication to report?
A couple of quick things. Um, so the Habitat Conservation Plan that we're working on, we've completed, uh, five draft chapters. They're being reviewed by the U S Fish and Wildlife Service. Um, and we're planning to have another, we call it an interested parties meeting at the end of this month. So, uh, June twenty seventh, is that correct?
At six P M.
Yeah, six P M. So this will be the third one we've had. The last meeting, I think we probably had maybe a half a dozen attendees, but, um, obviously the planning commission is welcome to attend if you like. And, uh, we sent that out, didn't we, to the planning commission and the council, the invite? So. Um, should be, if you want to grab that and put it on your calendar.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't see anything.
You didn't get anything on it? Okay, well, we'll double check. Um, and then as far as the comp plan goes, we're, we're just kind of grinding away on that still, working with the consultant, starting to get technical information in, but nothing in the way of draft chapters yet to work. That's all I have.
Five to six public comments. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to address the commission, comments are limited to three minutes and five speakers. Comment on matters listed on the agenda are welcome. If there is anyone who wants to comment, ask, they need to come forward and make a statement.
Is there a blue card or anything to fill out, or?
Oh, you signed in upfront, right?
Signed in upfront, yeah. Okay, well, I don't have any prepared comments, but I wanted to take a, just a, a moment to talk about, uh, in particular, the nineteen ninety Washington State Growth Management Act that I'm sure most, if not all of you are pretty familiar with. Uh, some of the things that were outlined in that I think these days are, are pretty antiquated. Uh, I know that it was proposed with the best intentions. There was collaboration between Yelm and Thurston County for zoning out here. Uh, but it has been thirty-four years now, and, uh, some of the current zoning is, is probably obsolete at this point. I just attended the Thurston County, uh, Community Forum on Thursday of last week. And, uh, a lot of that forum was discussing the, the lack of housing in, in the, in the county, in particular, and considering Yelm's the fastest growing town in the county. I think that that is suffice to say that, that Yelm needs more space to grow. Uh, the most logical space is close to town. There's considerable amount of land, uh, that is surrounded by city limits between road and road, and Al Road and M P Road, that is zoned both industrial and light industrial. I have a vested interest in that land, a considerable amount of that is my family's land, so I'm here to speak on behalf of them. Uh, that land has been available for sale for thirty-plus years, and it's, it's uh, my dad, my family sold ten acres to, uh, Mr. Sternoff in nineteen eighty-two and nineteen eighty-three. He put up a sign saying, "Will Built to Suit." About twenty-two years later, that sign finally rotted and fell to the ground, and it is, uh, that land is now, uh, I think it's, there's, there's, there's a plan for that land with Mr. Sternoff. Again, I can't speak for him, I can only speak for my family. Uh, when I'm at three minutes, by all means, come on, I can conclude next month. Uh, but I, uh, am trying to figure out the best way to move forward with getting zoning changed. Uh, this is land that is currently in the county. Um, it's not city land, but I know that the city uh, collaborates with the county on some of these, uh, changes. And there's, there's, uh, from my standpoint, uh, no industry's moving to Yelm. Industry is by and large not moving to Washington, and if they do, they want to be along I five or along the waterway or or rail. Yelm has none, none of that. Um, speaking, uh, to a number of truck drivers that I chat with from time to time delivering goods to my, uh, the business that I operate, they don't like driving to Yelm. It's just, it's not a great drive. Um, and I know there's transportation initiatives in play that are going to alleviate some of that as well. But as far as the housing piece goes, in my opinion is if, if there is a housing crisis that, that, uh, it's being for trade, and I, and there is, Yelm's growing, we can't stop that. We need more places for that to grow, and industrial zoned land is, is not likely necessary in this area. Again, it was, was the best intentions to have Yelm be a small vibrant city, but we are, I believe, a, 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 a blossoming bedroom community. And that's, that's how the city I would like to, uh, think would look for it. That's all I have.
Well, we have just a second, if you don't mind. Um, this pulls kind of, so that is the urban growth area. Anything that's colored and is not in the city, it's in the county, but will be annexed at some point into the city. And when it is annexed, those are the zoning designations that we foresee at this time anyway, in agreement with the county, those would be the zoning designation. So, uh, where is your property?
Uh, this is my property. These two parcels are my parents', Sternoff property is this ten acres here that I spoke to. This is the, uh, that's the Swanson's property, and that is the Cole's Porterfield property.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I couldn't make a, um, you know, any sort of commitment right off the top of my head in terms of the amount of industrial that we have in, in the city. And going forward, it's, it's really kind of only a fraction of what we have for commercial and residential, but that doesn't mean that we couldn't consider, you know, you're allowed, you can apply for any reason you want. Of course, right now, you would have to apply to the county.
Right.
Um.
And we understand that that's probably a pretty lengthy process, so.
So the two, yeah, that's county would be very probably difficult to work with on a rezone, because right now, I think almost everything in their urban growth area is zoned one to five.
Mm-hmm.
And it would depend too on what, what it is contiguous to. So, for example, if one of those parcels were completely surrounded by industrial, um, it would not be possible to just rezone the one and spot zone. But anyway, we can have those conversations.
Okay.
I see what you're saying. Mr. Sternoff has been working the best and has expressed some of the same concerns about developing it as an industrial use.
Yeah, yeah. And over the last twenty years, you know, we have had quite a handful of developers, the, the, the Mountain Shadow Estates and Mount Sunrise Estates across the, across the way. Uh, he tried for two years to get the zoning changed. Uh, then, and there's been other developers that have come our way with the same intent, and they, basically, they just come back with their hands, and they're saying, "I don't know what's wrong with this county," but, um, they won't budge. It's kind of the, the, the take that we've always got. But at any rate, I, it's just, I think Yelm is out of time. There, we're at a place in time where it's probably a good time to try to have some dialogue about it again.
Well, I guess if I had to give an opinion on it, I, I would say the best, quickest, most likely way of being able to do a rezone would be to have it annexed into the city first.
Mm-hmm.
And that particular area is one, we've got a couple like that, that it is kind of a priority area, uh, from the standpoint of annexing that area, um, right there within the U G A, would get rid of an irregular boundary that we currently have, if you know what I mean. We've got a bunch of really zigzaggy jagged city limit boundaries that we would like to try to correct over time.
Mm-hmm.
So, anyway.
Thanks, thanks for talking.
People else? Public comments? Is done.
Okay.
Like over seven unfinished business? Do we have any?
Oh, sir.
Nothing? Hey. Under new business, staff have any new business to report?
We do. So, uh, going back to our continuing conversation of, um, public updates in the Central Business District and, um, expanding that into the commercial, um, and just kind of revisiting quite a few chapters, um, and I'll get to all of them as we go through, um. But really, the purpose of updates is to allow more flexibility, um, for development and commercial zones, um, provide bicycle parking facilities for commercial and multifamily uses, uh, clarify some definitions, and, uh, provide hyperlinks and images to the Yelm Municipal Code to make it, um, easier to locate and interpret our city code. Um, so with the, the summary of the updates, and this kind of stems back to, um, the conversation that we had quite a few months ago when Tim first came in and explained some of the challenges he's facing in, um, in the C B D with his lot. So we took a look, um, we're opening up several chapters to look at, um, and we want this really to be a collaborative process. So we're thinking with this, we kind of do a first reading today, um, and then gather some feedback from everybody, and then do a second reading with everyone's proposed changes, uh, and then followed up by a third, um, so looking at maybe August, September timeline, uh, to host a public hearing and, uh, make a recommendation to council. It's kind of what the process looks like for us. Um, so in terms of the updates, to, one, we want to allow, uh, a certain amount of residential development in certain areas in the C B D um, and clear, and clearly illustrate its restrictions. Um, again, we don't want multifamily and, um, things that are not mixed use right on prime commercial paths. Um, one proposal, another proposal is to reduce density requirements from twenty units per acre in the C B D to sixteen. Uh, remove a maximum density, include recreation and then entertainment venues. Uh, right now, we have service-oriented establishments, but we don't clearly define. Um, I mean, that's pretty loose, uh, use and, which is good, um, but also it could come back and bite us potentially. Um, but adding entertainment like the, you know, having the possibility of a theater or, um, some other recreation. Uh, we want to establish minimum, uh, bicycle parking requirements, uh, for commercial and multifamily uses. Uh, right now, we don't have any bicycle parking requirements, um, and reduce parking requirements in all zones where onsite parking is unachievable, um, but on-street parking is available. And then with that, uh, kind of a, the housekeeping would be updating the definitions chapter to include a lot of those, um, uses. Oh, thank you. Uh, and include parking facilities. So, um, things like the, the new parking lot that's being constructed just right across the way here, um, and allowing, because they kind of go, um, hand in hand with the, uh, reduced parking requirements, but we needed to have a place for people to park. So establishing that, um, yeah, parking facilities are allowed within those zones. Um, so I brought a printout for everybody. Um, I believe you all have it in front of you, um, and I'd like to go through it kind of chapter by chapter. And parking is later on, um, but I'd like to take a look at the C B D first and, um, kind of go through some of these red marks that I have. Um, so for the first one, you can ignore the eighteen point three five. That was just, it caught it, and I didn't type it in. Don't worry about that part. Uh, but mixed use developments, I just added a hyperlink um, so that developers and staff can, you know, if they see mixed use development, and it'll jump right to that overlay, just making it a little easier to find our code. Uh, here's the recreation and entertainment venues, and these next uh, four have a special criteria. That's a little bit later in the chapter, um, but adding the ability to put in uh, duplexes, townhomes, and multifamily dwellings, uh, as well as live-work structures in the C B D.
Yeah. Oh, no, can we do, do that off of the screen? Or do you have it pulled up?
Uh, I can, yes. Hope you brought some glasses. Can you all see that, or might, I'm going to try and zoom in a little bit. So with, uh, yeah, live-work structures, and then, um, we took uh, Rich's comment, and I think it was, I believe it was
Yeah.
your comment about the cemeteries and wondering if that was an appropriate, uh, you know, use in the C B D. Uh, and we, we took that to heart, so we have a proposed to remove that from the C B D. Um, and then down here within the C B D is, uh, parking facilities. And we have updated, so we took the parking minimum out of the C B D, and that will be held in the parking chapter. Um, so that if you're looking for parking requirements, it's all within the same chapter. Going to page five. Uh, so going into the residential restrictions and, um, the map that was on the slide previously, I'll go back to that after I describe it, but, um, so for duplexes, townhomes, and multifamily that are not mixed-use developments, um, we want to have those, again, far away from Yelm Avenue, five oh seven, five ten. Um, so we kind of came up with a a stipulation where there, they need to be a hundred and fifty feet from an arterial or collector, uh, measured from the nearest parcel boundary to the right-of-way line, uh, and may not be located on lots, uh, point two acres or smaller, or or may only, sorry, may only be located on lots point two acres or smaller in size. Uh, and I went just the other day and measured, um, each of the zones that we were considering, and making sure that, um, it fit that description of being a hundred and fifty feet. Um, so again, putting those images in the Yelm Municipal Code might, might be, uh, helpful in, in identifying those areas. Um, we have included service-oriented retail mixed-use developments, uh, must include bicycle parking. Um, as, so, uh, short-term and long-term bicycle parking. Um, so short-term is where you pull up to a store and, you know, you put your own chain or, um, bicycle lock on it, uh, and long-term storage would be more of a bike locker, um, more of a, yeah, long-term solution. Uh, and we have those defined in our, uh, definitions. Uh, density, so removing the twenty units per acre and dropping it down to sixteen units per acre, which is consistent with uh, all the mixed use and all the other commercial zones. Um, within the C B D, it was noted that it would be twenty units per acre. Um, but as we're starting to find out, the, the parking requirements are becoming an issue, um, with that density requirement. That's, those are all the updates for the C B D. I know there's a couple of them in parking, um, but I'm going to go through chapter by chapter. Is there anything that jumps out to anybody right off the bat?
I don't know if it really has to do with this, but I'm just curious. On when it was talking about the setback, now, was that the, uh, housing instructors, or was that commercial as well that was supposed to be so far away from the street?
Let's take a look. If he went, I'm too far. Right there, yeah, the residential restrictions.
Yeah, I thought, um, ra- reason, reason being that I was asking is that I thought like in the, the commercial business district that commercial properties had to be so far off the street, you know, um, I mean, I was and reason I'm asking specifically is that I know that they just built the new, um, service, uh, building for, I can't remember the.
Car Star.
Yeah, Car, Car Star, and that's like right butt up next to the sidewalk. And I thought that there was supposed to be like a little bit more of a an easement or something there for, you know, visibility, because I mean, if you've got foot traffic, bike traffic, especially in a service building like that where you've got moving vehicles, I didn't know if that was the safest.
Well, part of the vision, uh, that we did, Eon, to go
Mm-hmm.
was to bring buildings to the front and the parking to the back. Well, you know, so to, to make the, uh, front of the doorway, better looking than a bunch of cars, you know.
Right, okay, yeah, 'cause I know, I know that the parking's on the other side, but.
Yeah, that's kind of where they, they got the latitude to be able to.
Uh, yes.
We did that for, do you go down just opposite the middle school, there's a building.
Just wanted to get the first, I know, could he start?
Sure. Yeah.
Building that was.
Oh, yeah, uh. Actually, I crashed the McDonald's.
Uh-huh.
Yes, okay.
And that was one of the first ones that was constructed on those new guidelines of
Hmm.
in front. Front-facing on Yelm Avenue.
Yeah, interesting.
With, uh, just right at the, um.
And there's supposed to be landscaping between the building and the sidewalk.
It's not like you're, like.
Yeah, and going, so going back to that question, in the C B D, um, you know, I believe the vision was to make it more walkable and have things closer together. Um, currently, as the code states right now, there's no uh, setbacks for commercial. Um, in the C B D, there's only setbacks for residential.
But, you know, I have the same observation about the Car Star when, in that, I think the intent that we've had is we want, um, the, you know, again, the walkability, but the, the sort of the aesthetic of having the stuff close and more intimate to the, to the sidewalk and the streets, but uh, the thing that stands up for the Car Star one is there's no entryway there. So in other words, I think the intent too is to have the front of the building facing the street. So people go walk up to the door and they walk in, and that's something, uh, I think we need to think about.
Yeah.
The, the physical therapy one does not have the front door on the street.
But at least they have landscaping.
Yes, they have landscaping.
Yeah, I mean, at least it's a, there's a, you know, a certain aesthetically pleasing, even though it's the back of the building. I mean, it's with the landscaping they did, whereas with Scar, Car Star, I think there's just the wall. I mean, there's no route.
Yeah. Out there. No, I hear what you're saying. I, I think it's something, something we need to look at. Um, I mean, the ideal again would be a, a building, a business that you walk into from the sidewalk. I mean, the intent is good from the standpoint of we're not putting automobile parking lot areas there. They're going around and going to the other side of the building, but I think there, there are still some other design features we need to think about.
Thank you.
Good point. Thank you for bringing it up, and as we go through these changes, um, if there's something that you'd like to see, please you know, write it down and, and bring it to the next planning commission meeting.
Yeah, well, somebody's gonna need to let them know that they're gonna need to move it over a couple feet so we can plant some.
Yeah.
No.
There's still time.
Yeah, it's a try.
Not, not unique.
Uh, going into the C one, um, so we have three commercial zones, C one, C two, and C three. Um, again, the hyperlink to make mixed-use developments more easily accessible, um, when you're looking up the code. Uh, we've proposed to include live-work structures and again, recreation and entertainment venues. We've done that for, uh, C ones through C three. Um, so I'll have to, I want, keep repeating the same thing. Um, yeah, those are just so, you know, all commercial.
Cemeteries there again?
I think cemeteries is in the that's in the C one, though.
C one, okay.
Yeah.
That's where we are at this point in C one, where everything's, you said.
Correct. Uh, and again, the same thing with C one through C three, uh, adding those service-oriented, uh, mixed-use developments, including bicycle parking. Um, I don't know if you've tried, tried to ride your bike around town, but it can be a challenge to find a parking space for it that's secure. C two, same identical to C one in the changes that we're looking at. And same with C three.
So now this document will eventually be available on the website where, which is where the hyperlinks come in. So once they visit the website, then they'll be able to use the hyperlinks once this is an active document.
It'll be, um, on Code Publishing.
Okay.
Um, so I, what we did is we copied and pasted and made it into a, basically a working Word document. Um, so when you go to, uh, the Yelm Municipal Code, we don't really have any hyperlinks within it. Um, you just kind of have to know, for example, mixed use is a great example. Um, we allow mixed-use developments, but we've got, we get emails all the time asking what, where the, where they can find the standards for mixed use. Um, so we have to go in and say, you know, it's under this section, it's under zoning overlays, and, um, it'd just be a little easier to hyperlink, but yes, it will be it will be published online for everyone to, development commission, staff. In reference.
You're saying we don't have hyperlinks in our Y M C on the web?
Not that, I mean. We might have them in a few.
We, I think we can, I think we can make it a hyperlink.
I know a lot of folks have, yeah.
Well, it would, it would just my, my question, since he's got the hyperlink, talking about the, the availability of hyperlinks in this document, it's like, you know, well, okay, for for this presentation, you know, yes, but other than that, what's, what's the purpose of the hyperlinks if, you know, for the general public?
Yeah, well, it definitely, it would, it would, it's like, it'd be easier to navigate the codes, so. For example, as Drew said, we allow mixed-use developments in our commercial zones, but before, all we said was mixed-use developments are allowed. People didn't realize that there was a whole other chapter that discussed what the standards for mixed-use developments is.
Right.
And so now either, even if we don't have a hyperlink, there's a citation there that tells them where to go in the code to find that. But I'm assuming we can do a hyperlink, because I know other folks do, so.
Other people, other cities do that also use Code Publishing. Um, just to take a quick look at what it looks like currently. So if you go to the Yelm Municipal Code, um, all of our stuff for planning and is under chapter eighteen. So when we're looking at the code updates, um, I'll pull up the uh, Central Business District, for example. So while we're making the changes in a Word document, eventually the changes will show up within this website here.
True.
Um, and as you can see, it says, it says mixed-use developments, but I would have no idea where to go to find that, um, if I, if I didn't work here. Um, so going, and then you have to go into, um, zoning overlays. Zoning overlays. And then you'll find mixed use development. So it's like it's just making the onion a little bit more. Accessible. Feelable. Choppable.
A good, good addition.
Again, the same same language there uh for industrial, the. Uh, changes are again, the live work structures, recreation and entertainment venues. And then uh, we're checking right now, we are in the zoning overlays. So again, kind of a, it does take some flipping back and forth between different chapters. And we wanted to. And residential developments. There's a list that. For those for a planned residential development, you're also gonna need to look in chapter eighteen. One one six and eighteen point one oh point one two zero section G. Those are that's not really a change. Um, it's just again, making it more. I guess easier to find information that you need to if you're looking to uh construct a. Mixed use development or a planned residential development. Looking at the density standards. Here's where I mentioned earlier is uh we're looking to eliminate the maximum density. Um, and really leave it up to the development to figure out how many units they can provide. Um, because it it's almost self-regulating with parking requirements. Is kind of what we found is if you can provide the parking for, you know. Sixteen units. Or a hundred units, as long as there's parking, there's not really a an issue, um, so to speak, so. Again, just making it easier to find. Code relating to mixed use developments. And now we're into parking updates and that is on chat page twenty six. And adding the language before or that is currently, uh, it only. Talks about motor vehicles, um, so we went in and added bicycles. To fit the intent. And down below, so um, we want to increase bicycle parking facilities on site. Uh, to decrease the need for motor vehicle parking.
I have a quick question, yeah, with the. The growth and the use of electric bikes. And electric bikes now. You know, attaining thirty miles per hour or more. Um, do we need to have anything that differentiates? Regular bicycle riding from uh from e-bikes. And when we worked on the trails, we tried to make sure that uh it was recognized that e-bikes are allowed. And encouraged on the trails, but. But they need to be cautious of the other users. And travel at a safe speed. But I'm just wondering what? Do we need to consider anything like that to differentiate?
In terms of the codes, I mean. That I don't want to jump into traffic or say something that, you know, I have no control over. I would say that for bicycle parking. I don't think it would matter between an e-bike and a, uh, you know. Traditional pedal bike. Because, you know, at the end of the day, there. We want to provide a space for for them to park that. And whether it's an e-bike or just a traditional pedal bike. I don't know in terms of their security measures on those, um, but having a place where they could safely park there. I I think would be the same.
If you do raise an issue that I've wondered. Vehicle. And and that's gonna, I think, have to be defined by. Transportation or whoever makes that definition, but yeah, I mean, if you've got a a bicycle. Goes thirty five miles an hour, I mean, that's like having a, um, you know, a little motorcycle as far as. Yeah, they could be.
They are classified as bicycles at this point.
Yeah, as far as parking goes, I mean, if they're using it for transportation and if it's small enough that it they can. Look it up to bicycle parking, I don't see there being any issue there.
Call him out separately in in this situation.
I don't think in this situation it warrants to call him out separately.
Just thinking about how. How things are evolving toward the future, where we where we're going. Look at California. But e-bikes are taking over.
You've seen those things, it's just, uh, it's like two wheels, the guy stands on and he leaned forward and they take off. Those things go fast.
The single wheel ones.
The one males.
But but.
Is there an area, I'm sorry, is there an area with definitions? On the the municipal code.
There is, yes.
Re- reason being is that may maybe to kind of go along with what Ann's saying is that. If you put like bicycles and include e-bikes. You know, I mean, then that that way there's there it it at least encompasses the the definition within that, so if. Somebody says, you know, wants wants to look up bikes and, you know, they can see that it includes the e-bike, so. I mean, just.
You just said, there are gonna be some rules that may differentiate between the two. At least that's what we found in terms of some of the trail guidelines that.
But I mean, potentially for the time being, though, I mean, if it would answer. The question.
For the time being, you may say it's probably not gonna be as serious a question, but the way it's going. At least what I'm seeing with my grandchildren, that's gonna be the transport. Going forward. Just. And they go fast.
Yeah, and that's a good point, and I would definitely recommend making a note of it and. You know, get. I would like a little bit more time to chew on that one. And then going into um parking lots. So this is again, we're in the general parking chapter now. Trying to avoid situations where parking lots have giant potholes that can damage. Cars and are, you know, a a safety hazard. I don't want to say any particular, but I'm sure you can think of. So. Trying to add language that would prevent that from happening or. And then when that when those situations do come up, that allows the city to go in and fix it um at the property owner's expense. So right now, what we have um. Propose each parking lot shall be permanently maintained. Parking lots and driving aisles that serve a commercial use and deemed by the Yelm City Council. To pose a safety hazard uh due to emitting maintenance will be repaired by the city at the expense of the property owner. Um, and we have drafted similar to a stormwater agreement. Require subdivisions um and commercial to maintain their stormwater facilities. To also maintain that their parking off-street parking facilities. So we're kind of. Our hands were tied. In some of those circumstances where we know a parking lot's a hazard and we get calls every day about it, but there's nothing we can do about it, so. Yeah, adding that language in there to to prevent that from happening in the future.
Yeah, I just want to circle back real quick. Amber, did you say that if a parking lot is privately owned? Isn't being maintained? Just wanted to make sure I was good.
And the the application of that, I mean, we have to think about because. So like we have the same kind of provision for subdivision, uh, they have to maintain their stormwater facilities and if they don't, we do have the authority. To go in and and do that and charge them for it. This is something I think we do need to talk about. With the attorney as to whether this would apply to existing parking lots or new parking lots that would be part of a condition of a future development. Because like if we're doing a multifamily development, going to the hearing examiner, we can put that in now as a condition. So they know going forward that they they're on the hook.
I mean, I don't see any problem with it. And my parking lot isn't. Fixed, you know, I'm on the hook for myself anyway, but I just thinking about other places that may not. Have the money to do that, you know, and then all of a sudden. We go, oh, by the way, we're gonna come in and fix it for you and we'll charge it for it. It's like, well, I can't even fix it myself, so.
So it may not be able to be retroactive.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, I have the answer to that one, we're the other at the moment, but.
Yeah, just one thing that we're exploring. Yeah, trying to find solutions for that. Uh, going in, so we've gone and um looked at adding bicycle parking requirements. Um, specifically to um the number of units. The number of square footage. Of a commercial use uh and a lot of this stuff, um, we refer to Olympia, they have. A pretty comprehensive um bicycle parking requirement chapter. And uh so we started poking around and. Use them as a reference point, so. These are all numbers that are negotiable. And just trying to find the right answer for Yell. Let's start on page. Twenty eight, and I mislabeled that, it's actually out of thirty six, uh, we added a few pages, but. Um, so yeah, starting on twenty eight. It goes through the. The specific parking requirements for each use.
And do you say that these these new requirements are um derived from? What Olympia has put together, and so that makes sense. Yeah, you didn't have to make it up on. Yourself.
Correct. Yeah, all this is uh, all this is new and. Trying to get it to be more, you know, pedestrian and bicycle friendly.
Do you remember the video that we saw about parking, right?
Yeah.
About the standards are all in a sense made up, but I mean, it's not necessarily a scientific thing, it's you can just gotta go by what you think is is.
But I think it's a very good thing. Someone copy from our local other cities that have already gone through this this process.
We all copy from each other. I'm sure Olympia copied from someone. No sense in recreating the wheel. So one thing I do want to add, we have taken a look at, but didn't want to. Tackle it at this time, but we will be tackling like requiring EV charging for developments as well.
And then um, as stated earlier, the moving the parking requirements from the uh CBD and. Um, allowing them. To apply to uh more than just the CBD, I think the language could be cleaned up a little bit. But yeah, making sure that, you know, parking is in the parking chapter.
And also, just as a reminder, and you know, this was like a year ago. Remember, we were here at the time, Richard. But we had. Steve Craig and, oh gosh, the architect, um, Tom Tom came in. And we're talking about how it was, it's virtually impossible for them to develop their lot because of the. Again, the density um max and the parking requirements, so some of this is specifically to try to address that issue.
And then, yeah, jumping into definitions. Um, so we've added a definition for live work structure. Long-term bicycle parking, short-term bicycle parking. Uh, townhouse, condo, triplex, row house. And tiny house and cottage house. I guess we got a couple more, uh, recreation and entertainment venue is defined as well and don't worry about the bottom part, because that's just, those are just mine. Notes as I was going through and uh going through each chapter, I'm just kind of pulling things from my notepad, so. Uh, that's kind of what we're looking at. And I expect. Next month, everyone will have a chance to to look through this a little bit and, um, you know, have. Questions about certain things and again, we want this to be collaborative um and going through. Two readings and then um hosting that public hearing and making a recommendation to council.
Okay, now, or one area that, you know. As you're going through it, just looking at what the allowed uses are. In each of the zones. And are there any other uses out there that you think would be appropriate in commercial zones, for example? Or not?
I don't know if I I might have not added that.
But there was another piece of this that we were looking at, which we may or may not feel. This time that that stacking is um refers to any drive-throughs. That, you know, well, drive-throughs and the number of car, the amount of space you need to make available so that you. Can accommodate the cars that are getting in line to go around. We don't have any specific standards for that, and we ran into an issue with Pico's pit, trying to figure out the right way to address it. And that's another one where we can, we can steal code from other cities that have. Standards for how many cars you should be able to stack without getting in any travel lanes and all that kind of.
Out of curiosity, the um. Map, uh, I don't know if that's like an ArcGIS or or the the program that you use for the planning that's going on within the city and stuff. Is that just strictly something that you use or is that something that, you know, we can access? As a.
The maps that we pull up with zoning and everything.
Well, now, I I know that the there's zone maps that, you know, we can access, but the one that shows. The outlay of of the. Bypass, um, you know, and and some of the, some of the new buildings that are gonna potentially gonna be, you know, yeah. It's, yeah, the show me everything.
I think that's internal, it is internal. We also put stuff on there that's not necessarily. Some of us, just for our own planning purposes, it's not necessarily based on an apple.
There's just like, you know, when Carl Carlos was talking about, um, you know, in the Starbucks and the Circle K and, you know. We're not familiar with some of the stuff that's, you know, going up, like if, you know, we're Astros, you know, but. Um, if there was something that we could refer to that, you know, we can. But yeah, I I understand internal working documents, you know, so.
Yeah, we've um, we we heard. From. I think it was two months ago, maybe now, um, and we started adding the planning commission on to our notices of application. Um, so whenever there's an a new project that's uh been officially submitted. Um, we'll send that notice of application to the planning commission. Uh, I think there's only been one since then that has come in.
I haven't received any. And I know out of sight, I know out of sight, out of sight, out of mind.
Yeah, I have it, I'll, I put a note down, so. Uh, make sure that you're getting that. But yeah, from now on, that's how it should work is uh as soon as an application submitted. But yeah, from now on, that's how it should work is, uh, as soon as an application submitted, um, like we send it to. Uh, Nisqually and Squaxton and Orca, Ecology Orca and so on. So adding the planning commission to that, uh, we thought would be a beneficial thing as well. Um, yeah, those are all the projects going on right now.
I see, you got the plots at it.
That, uh, kind of conclude, I, I would say that concludes my, uh, first reading. Um, and just look forward to working together and making those changes or any changes.
When, can I throw one thing in before we conclude? And that is, um, you had talked about in the parking, uh, that E V requirements were being thought about. Uh, I know in the new parking lot, that's being built, they're putting a lot of some E V charging stations in. Um. And. I'm curious if, is it too early to put something in on the bicycle side? For charging? Because if you have people that are storing their bikes for more than four hours or, you know, longer period of time, uh, and they are e-bikes. Those people are gonna want.
That's interesting, I hadn't even thought of that one, that's good.
Basically a charging station for the.
For the e-bikes too.
Is it, is it possible, do the E V stations, do you know, have, uh, like ports or anything for charging the bikes?
Not the ones I've seen, they're really particular to, in fact, they even have different. Charger. Connections. If you're a Tesla versus other kinds, um, cars.
And by Ford's not a Tesla, I mean, I can't stop at any of their places right now.
Like an Apple versus Xand.
Uh, exactly, yeah.
I, I actually saw an M V T station that was the company's generator.
Really? It was, it was a picture. They're using gas, they're electric, okay.
Whether or not, does it need to?
I have not heard of any of these. Have that requirement, that's not to say they don't, I just haven't looked at that, but, um. So we'll have to figure out how E V bikes work and see what's the right thing.
It's just curious, because if people are using them over a longer distance. Um, to go places, and. And they're gonna want to park. And their parking is not in their apartment, they're gonna, they need to have some way to store it. And to park it outside. Um. Who knows, um, but it's something that, it'll probably come back. To get us later on, if we don't do something about it, you know, ten more years and. And they'll say, why didn't you think of what we were gonna do with? With bikes.
Andrew will have this problem solved by next month, so.
Yeah, I'll take a look at e-bike charging and the e-bike I would buy, if I were to buy an e-bike, all that kind of stuff.
You're, you're figuring these out, good, and I'm glad.
We're gonna be looking at them in Best Buy yesterday.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Just to drive around the loop.
Oh, a thousand dollars, drive around the loop, okay.
The gas thing you save.
Yeah, well, I've already got something in saved gas, you know, like.
Anyway.
No public hearings.
That's an electric scooter.
Well, then we come to. Number ten, subcommittee report.
On the parks, uh, we've got parade days coming up. And, um, in addition to that, we did have opening day on, uh, Prairie Line Trail. And, um, it looks really good. Anybody does get on their bikes, are just to, to hike out there, um, it really applies quite a bunch to them. And you can go all the way, well, actually, the sign says you could go all the way to, um, Ireland, but I think if you stop in Tenine.
Well, if there's nothing else. I mean, most, say, will you make the push?
I'll make a motion that, uh, this meeting be adjourned.
Been made to adjourn the meeting and secondly, the meeting is hereby closed.
Yes, thank you, everybody. Thank you, Andrew, appreciate it, everybody.